Do I have a motion to open the May 31st, 2023 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
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 Thank you.
Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have CSEA and teacher personnel as well as contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the May 31st, 2023 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one set of minutes from the May 17th, 2023 Business Meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium. Just please state your first and last name. It does not appear that we have any public participation. Okay, so lots of good and exciting news happening in our school district, as always. Such a busy time of year. So really exciting. On Friday, May 19th, we had the return of our wonderful Coffee House at the high school. Fifty-five students from Harrison High School, as well as LMK, took the stage in the Student Union for the first time in a couple of years. It was standing room only. It was a really large crowd, and the crowd was treated to a range of soloists, small groups, modern bands, and the students were really showing off their talents and songwriting talents. So congratulations to our student performers. And a big special thanks to Ms. Test for organizing the event and the Harrison High School Tech Crew for their work in setting up and managing their performance. And a great success by all.
I just have to ask Andy, I know it was, it ran about two and a half hours? And we were there the whole time. It was fabulous. The kids get to pick their own music, and a lot of kids still play electric guitar. Are we gonna air it anytime soon?
Next.
Next week? Okay. Because we're in a busy season, but it's worth watching if you want to see your kids perform. This is, they choose the music. It's their bands. It's all original stuff. And Megan and Scott Test are phenomenal people. They can accompany almost anything.
Quite a duo.
Quite a duo.
The Harrison High School Marching Band returned to action for two final performances last week, welcoming and entertaining our fifth grade students at Husky Day, and they had a chance to serve our community by performing at the Harrison Memorial Day Parade, honoring our local veterans and all those who have served and sacrificed. Congratulations to Ms. Lurcher, Mr. Beam, Bream, and Mr. Crozier for all of our marching band, major color guard members, for a wonderful marching band season.
Can I interrupt you again?
Of course.
So I think you were at Husky Day, were you not?
I didn't make it.
Oh, you didn't make it? Okay.
No.
So for those of you watching at home who don't know what Husky Day is, it's a tradition, it's run by our Physical Education Department. It is a series of activities designed to build trust and collaboration and cooperative behavior. But it brings together the four elementary schools. They all converge on the high school for the whole day. They're mixed in teams, so they don't know each other. They get assigned shirts. And by the way, this was the most vocal group in history. Ms. Bucham has said her hearing didn't recover for several days. But the marching band is incredible. The kids are getting off the bus. But I just want to thank, in particular, the Physical Education Department for the amount of time, energy, and effort that they put into it. Sometimes people think that physical education teachers are gym teachers. It's not a word we use. They are teachers. And what happens on that day is incredible. We were actually talking to a couple of the high school volunteers who not only remembered their Husky Day, they still had the T-shirts. And one of them said, "I made my best friend on Husky Day." So it's a great event. It's a total community, school-wide community event. So I just want to shout out to the Music Department and the Phys Ed Department for all their help in making that happen.
And they're the class of 2030.
Twenty thirty.
Are you trying to, are you daring me to stay? What's the...
Yeah, you are...
Twenty thirty, that's...
I wasn't there, but my son was there, and he had a wonderful time.
That's right.
And the T-shirt is enormous, and it said twenty thirty on it. It will still fit him when he's a senior.
One of the great Harrison traditions, Husky Day.
Yeah. Remy Badner was recognized for, by the County Exec George Latimer, at a May 15th Westchester County Youth Leadership Task Force meeting. So the meeting allowed the county exec to thank the students this year for activities preventing youth substance. And it was a wonderful opportunity to hear the students' perspectives on vaping, alcohol, marijuana, and other substance abuse. So just bringing that awareness to our students. And Olivia Napparano also represented Harrison High School in the task force, but she was unable to attend the meeting. So that was a wonderful recognition on substance prevention work. Congratulations to Chayton Hertzig for a third Diamond Degree recognition in the National Speech and Debate Association's Honor Society. He's going to be recognized at the 2023 National Speech and Debate Tournament. So congratulations to that, for that recognition.
We talk about debate almost every board meeting.
Every single...
But I was talking to Mr. Galano and Dr. Ladewig about Chayton Hertzig's accomplishments. If Chayton Hertzig was a basketball coach, he would be on the cover of Sports Illustrated. The level of success he has achieved is unprecedented in the country. This man has produced six national champions in less than, a little over a decade, which is just an incredible...
It's remarkable.
It is absolutely remarkable, and he's there until late in the evening, and the kids are there right with him. And kudos to all those kids, because when you sign up for debate, you are signing up for something that is really rigorous. But that's a tremendous honor for him, and we're so proud of him. He represents our school community so well. Thanks, Chayton.
Alyssa Remesa received the Central Intelligence Agency Award, which is a very special reward at the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, also known as ISEF. The Central Intelligence Agency invests in students' scientific, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, STEAM, education across the country to meet the intelligence community and nation's long-term national security needs to encourage nationwide interest in the development of STEAM skills, to see today's students grow into the nation's future technical leaders. So really impressive.
And we've had kids compete for that award before. This is the first winner. That's a big deal.
Yeah, so congratulations to Alyssa.
So there may be a career in intelligence in her future.
The Harrison High School String Ensemble earned a gold with distinction rating at NISM A Majors Festival, and the LMK band received a silver rating at NISM A Majors Festival as well. I just love how, when I give these updates, we're such like a broad range of talent across the board, and our students are really just following their passions.
And Mr. Bastone really deserves a tremendous amount of credit. Those of you that saw the orchestra concert, it was breathtaking. It's Mr. Puccio's favorite night. He's not here, he's almost always here. I wish he were here, but he absolutely cannot believe that's a high school orchestra. So...
And then back to Husky Day, even though we spoke about it briefly, more than 300 fifth grade students across the four elementary schools came together and attended Husky Day and participated in team-building exercises, also with their high school peer leaders. Super fun for all of them. And the spring concert, so we had sixth grade band orchestra and chorus percussion showcase, the Preston Concert featuring fourth grade band, fifth grade band orchestra, as well as the fourth and fifth grade chorus.
I'm gonna narrate a lot tonight. So the percussion showcase is a really important thing for us to recognize. I'm gonna have a very hard time saying goodbye to Charlie Bream, one of the most dedicated and impactful teachers we've ever had. Charlie was my second hire in the Music Department when I took over here, and he has been a soldier forever. So we get to say goodbye, not only to Charlie, but to all our retirees. On the June 20th meeting?
Fourteenth.
June 14th meeting, we will also be recognizing people for tenure on that night. It's not the big tenure night, but we'd like to bring the retirees and the tenure folks together on that same meeting. It's sort of the passing of the torch. So we'll be recognizing all of our retirees, both civil service and teachers, but Charlie is a special one. And I was at that percussion concert. Brian was with me, Lisa was with me. It was incredible. So if you're out there, Mr. Bream, it's gonna be hard to say goodbye.
So we have many Division III students that will be joining other Huskies who have committed to continue their athletics in college, along with many family, friends, and students, and school administrators, coaches as well, honored and celebrating these senior athletes for their D3 athletic acknowledgement. So Peter Renello will be playing football at Springfield College, Sabina Cosmo to play field hockey at Manhattanville College, Erin Malin, football at Hartwood College, Sabrina Callens, volleyball at La Salle University, and Ava Cefaloni at Dickinson College. But it doesn't say which sport, actually.
Ava is playing...
Soccer.
Soccer. Thank you, Andy.
Andy's everywhere, too, you know.
Yeah. He's following it all. Thank you. The girls lacrosse had, really had an excellent season. Unfortunately, they ended to a loss in Yorktown in the semifinals by very successful...
But against a powerhouse. That's as deep as they've ever gone.
Powerhouse, and, I mean, they had a...
Great season.
Really great season. And I think that that, they're gonna continue to build, because they have a lot of really strong, younger talent.
Yep.
Our Huskies baseball team, they also, they advanced to the semifinals, went over May pack. Marco Citro struck out 11, and the Huskies unfortunately lost to John J. Cross River in the Class A Section Championship semifinals. But again, a super successful season.
Yeah, and John J. went on to win it all, so... We're still waiting on those golf results. Has anybody heard anything yet? When are the...
We'll let you know in a week.
A week?
We'll let you know on Monday.
Monday, okay. Our boys golf team is doing quite well.
The girls softball also made it to the Class A semifinal, unfortunately losing to Ursulin. Alexia Cozzelli did receive Low Head Player of the Week. Congrats to her, for her honors, for her play during the week of May 14th to May 19th. So that's an awesome recognition as well for Low Head Player of the Week. Boys golf, Tommy Megan finished second in the Section 1 Golf Tournament, and Henry Herbert finished 15. Both boys earned all sectional, and Tommy Megan qualified for the state championship for the third straight year.
I just need to say that I was looking back, and I have people checking this, I don't think we've ever had an athlete qualify for the states for three consecutive years.
And at such a young age.
That's nine, 10, and 11.
Yeah.
Each year. And Westchester County is one of the most competitive counties you can, in Section 1 for golf. So three consecutive years to qualify for the states, that's quite an accomplishment.
Very impressive, I must say. The girls golf, Olivia Napparano placed 11th in the Section 1 Golf Tournament. She earned all section, all league, and all conference. Congratulations to Olivia. And after the first day of the Westchester Counties for Track and Field, Joe Croupy placed third in the triple jump. J2 of the counties will take place on May 20th at John J.
We haven't gotten the results, obviously.
Yeah.
But I will say that Mr. Croupy is brand new to the triple jump. He's only been doing it for half a season, so to place second is pretty good.
And before we move on to you, Dr. Wool...
Yes, please.
Mrs. Woolburton, would you like to give your policy update?
Yes, thank you very much. The Board Policy Subcommittee has completed its review of several policies in the 7,000 Series related to student health and wellness, and policies in the 8,000 Series related to curriculum and instruction. The Board will conduct a first reading of these policies tonight, and then we will vote on a resolution to approve these policies at our June 14th meeting. The policies are available for public review in the District Clerk's office.
Thank you. One other, I know I often mention, but just really keep an eye on the district calendar. There is so much happening the month of June. I know that on June 6th, the current sixth grade athletics parent meeting will take place here at LMK at 6:00 PM. We have jazz night as well at the high school on the 6th. There's just a lot happening. So Relay for Life on June 10th, and then spring concerts as well coming up. So lots of events you don't want to miss. And with that, Dr. Wool.
All right, thank you so much, Madam President. Lots to talk about.
Oh, and also, elementary school has a half-day on Friday.
Good reminder.
Just as a reminder.
Couple of quick things. I mentioned tenure coming up, so we will be conferring tenure. As I like to remind the people who get conferred tenure, they don't actually get it unless they show up on September 1st, so don't miss it. I want to congratulate a former now employee, Dr. Julie Snyder, who was on a leave of absence completing her doctorate, and she was appointed Assistant Superintendent in Clarkstown. So we always want to wish our colleagues our very best, so congratulations to Julie. She did a great job while she was here. She built lots of really terrific programs for our neediest children, and that will be a legacy that will live past her time in Harrison, so we thank her for that. Not surprisingly, we're monitoring our enrollment. Now, Dr. Ladewig's doing it now almost hourly, but it is growing quite quickly. You may or may not have noticed, there's a little bit of building going on in our community. Our school district is very popular, and we are already considering having to add another teacher, and we're only at May 31st. So hold on to your hats, ladies and gentlemen. Let's see what happens. While we're on facilities, the Facilities Committee has been meeting with Tim and with me, reviewing the needs of the district, and we are struggling mightily to get ahead of all of the construction going on in our community. As you know, from our budget presentations, we have narrated for you all of the impacts on all of our elementary zones and everywhere else. And so in the next several weeks, you will be hearing more about a potential bond referendum. And as a matter of fact, on tonight's board agenda, we are appointing a construction management firm to help us navigate what's coming up. Want to talk a little bit about a presentation we did for the Harrison Education Foundation last night. Dr. Kanter was among the presenters, Dr. Mulhull, Dr. Wool, and Ms., Dr. Hodnot. That's right, we're a roomful of doctors. And Marlene Colonna. And we were sharing with them the way in which we are trying to improve and better supervise classroom libraries, and they're gonna help us maybe accelerate that work in the near future. So I want to thank the foundation, not only for giving us their ear, but for always being such terrific supporters of our school district. And Mrs. Kozak and I had an opportunity to attend an annual event that is one of my favorite events. I've been a superintendent now for, coming on the end of 21 years, and I've attended every Lower Hudson Council Scholarship Dinner, which is named in honor of Carol Johnson, who was a legendary superintendent in the country. He happened to be a superintendent briefly in White Plains, and he led the voluntary desegregation of that community, but he's also the first superintendent to ever put a woman or a person of color in the superintendent's chair. He was a legendary college professor, teacher emeritus at a teachers' college, and we honor kids in his name once a year, the most outstanding scholars from all of the schools in four counties. Every board president is there, every high school principal. It's a phenomenal night, but what is always so impressive to me is to look across 82 districts and see the extraordinary work of public education. There they are, the young people that are gonna have an impact on your lives and the lives of your children and your grandchildren. So I really enjoyed it, and our two kids were phenomenal. Rachel Kenler was there with us, and Jack Eif, and it was just a wonderful night, so I thank them for their good work. Tonight, we're going to share with you, Dr. Mulhull and her team of supporting administrators, Mrs. Egan and Dr. Kanter, will be talking about what we are already preparing to do, not only for our kids, but this actually benefits our teachers, because we use our summer programs as an opportunity to explore ways to improve instruction and also to try new things. And the buzz is, they're not quite as hot as Taylor Swift tickets, but pretty darn close. So Dr. Mulhull, as the aunt who gave Taylor Swift tickets to her nieces, would you please join us at the podium?
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share tonight. This is one of those topics that's just so fun to talk about, and part of the reason why I love the summer programs is because even though I get to talk about it along with Dr. Kanter and Mrs. Egan, we're really representing the work of every facet of the organization. So Mr. Whipple's helped us with the, through the business office, getting the supplies that we need, and figuring out which rooms will be available. Dr. Ladewig has kept us on task and following our timeline since January. We've been planning and making sure that all of the backend pieces are in place and that people are getting appointed, and that we're filling all of the positions. And then the rest of us get to imagine and dream a little bit about things that would be fun for students and things that we could use to pilot new programs. So this summer, what we have planned are over 30 curiosity camps for our elementary students. We have almost 20 additional secondary enrichment opportunities, along with all of the academic supports, the extension programs, and the jump starts. So just the academic supports, the extensions, and the jump starts, the enrollment for those comes a little bit more slowly, but just with our enrichment programs, we have over 600 students enrolled at this point. So that's pretty similar to where we've been the last two years, and we're very excited to see, to see where we end up. So Mrs. Egan's gonna tell you a little bit more now about our curiosity camps.
Thank you. And Jen, would you just tell people what your role is here in the district, so they know?
Sure. I am the Director of E&amp;L and World Languages. So thank you. So great to be here and to talk about such an exciting topic. So our curiosity camps are carefully designed to be really fun and engaging experiences for children, and I've just highlighted a few here, but there are more. I'm just gonna read through them quickly. We have global cuisines, art around the world, games from around the world, Italian and French enrichment through cultural exploration, creative creations, sensational science, plan, design, and create, tinker club, coding camp, all really exciting experiences. And they not only provide students opportunity for enrichment, but they are also deeply rooted in the principles of the IB Primary Years Program, specifically international mindedness and inquiry. So if you look to the left of the screen there, you can see that there's a lot of connections between those curiosity camps and international mindedness. So as students are exploring different foods and games from around the world, they're building their intercultural understanding, they're getting interested in global engagement. As they're sitting in French and Italian, they're practicing different languages and developing their multilingualism. Then if you look to the right of the screen, as our students are sitting in coding camp and creative creations, they're also asking questions, problem-solving, establishing and testing theories. So it's really closely tied to those important principles of the IB program. And I think, as we continue to hear throughout the night about other programs that we're offering in the summer, we're gonna see clear connections to all three of our IB programs here in the district. And that's really a point of pride, because I think that it speaks to the remarkable unconscious competence that our teachers have now developed in their instructional design, that they naturally incorporate elements of the IB program into all settings. So one such setting is a new curiosity camp that we're offering this summer, which is coding camp. So we're gonna hear from Ms. Beth Warren about how coding camp also is fostering inquiry skills.
Learning through science will engage the students' problem-solving skills and enhance their base thinking. We're interested in computers being able to do almost anything we ask them to do, but in order for that to happen, someone has to write a code to anticipate our effort in coding. Students in my camp are learning beginning stages of coding, including additional and loops. They will use the inquiry skills to take small problems and break them down into even smaller steps, always looking for patterns. We will need to be persistent, because programming is not a defensive application. Since computers are patient and mistakes are inevitable, coding provides opportunities for inquiry-based work by posing and answering questions on a pattern-efficiently right program. The persistence, inquiry, and problem-solving skills they learn during this camp will help them with school and life.
That's just amazing. And I love the line she says in there about how computers are patient, because I often have like a thousand tabs open, and my computer's very patient with me as I navigate through all of them. So we're gonna hear more about our wonderful summer offerings, and I'm gonna turn it over now to...
Wait, you don't get away that quickly.
Okay.
So I know partially why we're focusing on some world languages this summer, because it's our hope, and Mrs. Egan is doing the yeoman's work of research, we hope to reintroduce world languages at the elementary level, hopefully by the end of next year. So we're gonna, if we can manage to fit it into the budget, that will be the crowning completion of our Primary Years Program, and we'll be able to get final approval to be a PYP program. But this good work is gonna create a lot of energy and excitement around that. Thank you, Jen.
Absolutely. And it really is exciting when you get the opportunity to go buy the French and Italian curiosity camps, because they are designed in such a communicative way that kids are really engaging with the language, and there's also like a built-in cultural experience. So they're, they're gonna travel to Paris, and they're going to go order custom-made crepe and enjoy it. So, yes, thank you very much.
What days are the crepes? I'll never...
I can send an email. All right. Now I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Jamie Kanter, to talk a little bit about Reading with the Huskies.
Hi, I'm Jamie Kanter. Nice to see everyone this evening. I'm the Director of English, and I'm really excited to share with you a new program called Reading with the Huskies. Summer reading is challenging for everyone, parents, kids. It's hard to find the right books, and we know how important it is to continue to read over the summer. We, there's so much research that talks about that. So we've been grappling with this forever. I've been a teacher for a long time, and it's always a conversation I have with parents. How can we get your kids to keep reading? And so this program is really designed around that, and also creating opportunities for our high school students. So what Reading with the Huskies is, is an opportunity for our high school students to work with elementary students, being part of a book club. So currently, we have, these are a few examples. Joe is actually the student we talked about earlier, who was an athlete, who's reading the book Bad Guys, and he and these other students like Ella and Gal are preparing to lead a Zoom later this summer with our elementary students. So this provides opportunities for kids to be part of a community of readers, it creates viral energy around books, and it also helps parents find a collection of books, because that's often the challenge, like, what can I read next? So I just want to quickly kind of walk through the process and how it works. We've tried to make it as accessible and efficient for parents as possible. There's a website that parents can go to that gives summaries of all of the books. We have some awesome titles, like Mike Lupica's book, which is a sports book, as well as The Last Kid on Earth, which is one of my favorites, and Stranded, if you have a Survivor fan. Jeff Probst wrote that book as well. These are awesome books for our incoming third grade through fifth grade students. Once you click on a book, you can then sign up on our family ID, and then once you, the books are connected to days and times, so your child will actually receive the book with a little note from their high school, a high school student that says, "We're so excited to see you and meet you." And then you read. You have your child read, and looking forward to that book club opportunity that will happen in Zoom, on Zoom over the summer. And what the best part of this is, it doesn't end there. Most of these books, if not all of them, are series. So the hope is that afterwards, they're hooked, and they are excited to keep reading, and then they'll hear from their Husky reader in September to say, "How'd you do?" So this is very exciting, and it creates opportunities for our high school students to be leaders, and they are signed... and they are signing up. This is what they want to do, but also creates great opportunities for elementary students.
I just think this is such a great idea and such a smart idea. And I know that you have an abundance of high school kids, so many that want to do this, because they feel like it's a way to connect to their elementary, either friends or acquaintances. But picking books that were in a series is just so clever. And typically, if a kid goes away for summer camp, they feel like they can't participate. But because this is only one meeting via Zoom, the kids can get that book, read it, connect with that cohort of kids reading that book, and then continue on. I just think it's such a simple and powerful idea that can have really an impact on kids, and I love the choices.
I'm excited for, as a parent myself, like, this is now a collection I can turn to. That's the other thing. So if you're, you can't sign up, you can go to this website and find summaries of all the books, what we, we've designated, what age we think it is. And that's sometimes the hardest part about summer reading.
It really is.
Is like, how do you know what to read? So that, it's a resource for parents as well.
Yeah, I'm going to use some of these, because as you know, my favorite gift to give every person I know is books for them to read to their kids. You've come up with some good choices for me. Thank you, Jamie.
These are great. Thank you. So I'm going to pass this back to Dr. Mulhull.
So we just want to highlight a couple of the secondary options. If we were going to have a chief balance officer for Harrison Central School District, it would be Mr. Logue. He reminds all of us. And so as one of the IB learner profile traits, the outdoor adventure class that he teaches, even though it's not a new class this year, every year, um, the, the way that they approach it and the activities grow and evolve. And so I asked him if he could give us a little highlight reel of what to expect with that course.
I'm signing up for this. I just want you to know.
And the crepes.
My name is Bill Logue. I'm a pastor at Harrison School District. Mr. Logue serves a lot of learning, outdoor adventure, summer course on July 11th and July 12th. On the first day, we head into Port Patrick, do some hiking, some wildlife identification, and some life lessons, and then returning to school to do rock climbing in the gym. And on the second day, we'll be out on the Appalachian Trail, hiking, learning about road safety.
That's awesome.
Isn't that great?
And for those that are interested, swimming in Lake Welsh. Hope you can join us those days.
Love that.
And then another course that we're offering, which I think really highlights, um, some of those transdisciplinary connections that we can make, is Scientific Illustrations. So this course, although the details that are on the screen are for nine through 12, it also has a section for middle school students. And as with many, the French and Italian courses, with these courses and Reading with the Huskies, there's still spots available. So part of the reason why we wanted to highlight these courses is because we want as many kids as possible to be able to experience them and participate. So let's hear a little bit from Ms. Pestori.
Hi, my name is Ms. Pestori. This summer I'm going to be teaching Intro to Scientific Illustration. In this class, students are going to have the opportunity to observe objects and pictures that are ethnological and biological in nature, for example, flowers and animals' bones. We're going to use a technique called stippling to create shading using small dots, using my color pen and ink. And if students want to bring some color to their work, they can introduce some color pencil, and we should be watching. So if you're working here.
That's great.
And then in addition to all of our student courses, we're running approximately 50 courses for teachers this summer. Um, so far, we've got 684 registrations from 258 teachers, and we're really excited just about the variety of the courses, the new ideas the team's brought forward, and the way that we've, you know, tried to really capitalize on the opportunity to realize our, um, our journey as a fully IB system. So we'll be, there's a number of courses that are K-12, focusing on different aspects of the IB program, and this is the first summer we've been able to offer anything like, like that. So more to come, but we're very excited.
Thank you, Lisa. And, you know, you're always so gracious, and I love the way you have not only recognized the team, but the way you catalyze the team. They feel so cared for, and the amount of work that's been done with your leadership is incredible. This is one of the best summer programs I've ever seen. It's so deep and rich and so diverse. Kids can find an interest no matter where they're starting. And certainly, you're right to recognize all the support you got from the team, but thank you for all of your hard work. It was just great. Any questions, board members, before we jump to the agenda? At the end of the meeting, courtesy, the floor is over. Maybe you can, somebody go help him with his questions? Okay.
You've completed your update?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I want to just switch to the board agenda. We're ready. You're in.
Great, perfect. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take the administrative report on consent unless anyone else objects. Seeing none. Um, A, approval of memorandum of agreement with Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES to participate in the PNW, BOCES Teacher Internship Program for the 2023-24 school year. B, acceptance of donation from the Christopher S. Siginnott Memorial Scholarship Fund Corporation. C, approval of donation to establish a scholarship fund in memory of Barbara Mastangello. D, acceptance of donation from Seth and Shelley Morris. E, acceptance of donation from Friends of Harrison Baseball. F, approval of special education volunteer parent member for the remainder of the 2023, 2022-23 school year. G, approval of hearing officer for superintendent's hearings. H, appointment of impartial hearing officer. I, first reading of revised district policies. J, approval of CSE, CPSC minutes. K, approval of CSE, CPSC recommendations. L, approval of CSE, CPSC annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments?
Just want to thank Brian for continuing to push us to participate in the teacher internship program. It's paid tremendous dividends for our district. It was actually one of the reasons that we were able to do such a great job during COVID in providing onsite childcare support. So thanks, Brian.
And I would just like to thank, there were numerous donations. Um, so a very big thank you to the Christopher S. Siginnott Memorial Scholarship Fund Foundation. A big thank you to Barbara Mastangello, the fund in memory of Barbara Mastangello, um, as well as Seth and Shelley Morris, and the Friends of Harrison Baseball. Um, yeah, so thank you for all of the very generous donations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the personnel report, I will take the personnel report on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Three, temporary appointment, SED clearance submitted. Four, summer appointment, SED clearance received. Sorry. Okay. Um, B, non-certificated personnel. One, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Three, regular appointment, SED clearance submitted. Four, summer appointment, SED clearance received. Five, change of status. C, other. One, student teacher observer, SED clearance received. Two, contracted service provider. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just to comment, if the board should vote yes on this, Sophia will become a member of the Harrison faculty and a music teacher right here in the middle school. So thank you for being here. Let's hope they vote yeah.
All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations, Sophia, and thank you for being here tonight.
Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, contract award RFB number 23 dash 24 slash 24 dash oh three, stone masonry services, concrete flatwork. B, contract award RFB number 23 slash 24 dash oh four, commercial landscaping services. C, contract award RFB number 23 slash 24 dash oh six, painting services. D, contract award RFB number 23 slash 24 dash oh seven, automotive vehicle repair. E, contract award RFB number 23 slash 24 dash oh eight, asphalt paving. F, contract award RFB number 2024 dash two, construction management services. G, revised contract for health services, RISE City School District, 2022-23. H, contract award RFB number 23 slash 24 dash 13, reconditioning and storage of athletic equipment. I, bid rejection, RFB number 23 dash 24 dash oh five, boiler cleaning. J, contract award RFB number 23 slash 24 dash oh nine, fire alarm service repair and upgrades. K, contract extensions. L, 2022-23 appropriation transfers. M, bid rejection, RFB number 23 slash 24 dash 12, roofing replacement at Harrison Avenue School. N, contract award RFB number 23 slash 24 dash 11, classroom HVAC upgrades at Parsons Memorial Elementary School. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments?
Yeah, I think it's important to just pause there and see the depth and breadth of what goes on in the business office, and how many people had to be involved in just the approval of this component of the agenda, from construction to rejection of bids to working with other school districts. So, Tim, to you and the entire business office, we say thank you. We know this is a very challenging time of year for everybody, and we're getting there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Our next regularly scheduled business, business meeting is June 14th, 7:00 PM here at LMK. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.